I don't like this.
May everyone, we welcome you to this May 20th City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the invocation. Bishop Slater is here to do that for us, and after that we'll have the pledge to the flag. If you would please stand.
Bishop Slater, how are you?
All right. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can come together with the meaning of the minds. Father, we know you as a God of justice, peace, and love. We ask you to prevail today. We ask you to cover everyone that is here, even the men that you've put here through us, God. Use them, cover them, touch their minds, God, that we all do what we do for the good of the people. And Father, we thank you for making us leaders in this last day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Fortin-Bowley.
Here.
Councilmember Meloza.
Here.
Councilmember Sika.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Versus.
And Councilmember Ray Todd.
Here.
We're all here. Next, we have approval of minutes from our special call meeting March 20th, special call meeting March 20th, special call meeting March 22nd, special call meeting March 22nd, and recess minute meetings March 25th, and the work session and regular meeting of April 1, 2019 for adoption.
I'll make a motion that we adopt minutes of special call meeting March 20th, minutes of special call meeting March 20th, special call meeting March 22nd, special call meeting March 22nd. Recession meeting minutes of March 25th, and minutes of the work session and regular meeting at the April 1, 2019.
Is there a second?
Next.
Any discussion? All favor raised right hand, opposed likewise, minutes carried. Under presentations, we do have, this is Military Appreciation Month, and Doug is here, so I'm going to read this, and then Doug gets you to come up, because I know you'll want to make a comment. Military Appreciation Month proclamation. Whereas our brave servicemen and women, their families, and their loved ones share and support sacrifices for our freedom, this proclamation marks the beginning of the Military Appreciation Month, a month in which the Department of Defense and our grateful nation will honor the courage, commitment, and selfless service of our military. Whereas community members, businesses, military bases, and posts, and other organizations are encouraged to recognize military members and their loved ones with special events such as family activities, community gatherings, sporting events, retail discounts, and other forms of special recognition throughout the entire month of May. Military-connected nonprofit organizations, veteran service organizations, and other military service survivors, both public and private, are encouraged to band together to honor and serve our military families and their loved ones during the month of May. Therefore, I'll check in on Mayor Goldsboro to hereby proclaim May 2019 as Military Appreciation Month, and officially recognize the many sacrifices made by our veterans, service members, wounded warriors, their families, and their survivors, as well as the vast network of organizations that serve these heroes across the state. So Doug, let me present this to you, and I know, just knowing you, that you're going to have a couple comments. But I think it does say what the military means to our community and the relationship we have between the two. All right. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. All right. For those here, I'm sure you have some good comments.
Thank you, Mayor Allen. So I'm here tonight representing the Goldsboro Elks, but not exclusively the Goldsboro Elks. So this coming weekend, we will host the Third Annual Wings of Wayne Military Appreciation Festival. The festival is held at 207 South Center Street. Admission to the event is free. The event is family-friendly. It will feature live music, kids' activities, craft vendors, military appreciation awards, which are really kind of the serious moment of that day for us, and then a chicken wing cook-off, which has gotten a lot of traction in and around Goldsboro, which is how we kind of play with the name Wings of Wayne. So it's our opportunity on Saturday to say thank you to all the service members for all that they have done to give us our freedom. Then on Sunday, we follow that up with the Down East Ride for Heroes, which starts at Veterans Memorial Park. That event will gather at 11:00, will have an official ceremony at noon, and will then travel over to the Kinston Veterans Home to visit with the veterans our heroes that now call the Kinston Veterans Home their home. But it's not just exclusively the Elks. This weekend, there will also be, through the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition, the traditional presentation of flags throughout the Goldsboro area at the local cemeteries. That happens on Saturday morning. So the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition do an amazing job with that. And then following Memorial Day weekend, on Thursday, the 30th, is the DGDC Center Street Jam that is the military appreciation event. So we'd like to see as many people as we can come out and actually demonstrate with their presence the appreciation for what the military does for all of us. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Look forward to seeing you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next, we have public hearings. Our first public hearing, CU 619 Penske. Chair, if you've got one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item B is CU 619 Penske. The subject property is located on the north side of West Granton Street between Hargrove and Neville Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit in conjunction with the site plan approval to allow the operation of a truck rental, leasing, and sales center with outside storage. The property is zoned I-2, and truck rental, leasing, and sales with outside storage is permitted use within the I-2 zoning district, only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by City Council. The submitted site plan indicates an existing metal building of mixed-use construction with a gross floor area of 10,000 square feet. The proposed floor plan consists of a rental and sales area, office spaces, a break room, a parts supply and workshop space, warehouse storage areas, and restrooms. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 8:00 to noon. There will be about six to 10 employees associated with this business. The site is served by one existing 50-foot-wide driveway cut off of West Granton Street. Truck rental, leasing, and sales requires one space per employee plus five customer spaces and one space per vehicle stored on site. A total of 32 parking spaces have been provided, including a handicap van, accessible parking space. 19 spaces are shown at the front of the facility for patrons of the business, and the remaining 13 spaces will be located within a proposed storage area south of the existing metal building and used for the display of rental trucks and trucks for sale. Street trees and required vehicle surface buffer shrubs have been provided along West Granton Street. There's a Type A 5-foot-wide buffer that is proposed along the northern property line from West Granton Street approximately 115 feet to an existing 6-foot-high chain-link fence that also has barbed wire on it that surrounds the existing building and proposed outdoor storage area. The applicant is requesting a modification of the city's landscape buffer requirement along portions of the western and northern property lines, and a modification of the street tree requirement along a portion of Hargrove and Collier Streets due to an existing site conditions and existing vegetation. If the modifications are approved, the applicant proposes to install vinyl slats within an existing fencing to screen the proposed storage area from off-site views. Outside storage requires the screening of the entire storage area. According to the UDO, screening shall consist of an eight-foot-high solid fence. The height of the fence may be reduced to six feet if City Council determines that the items proposed to be stored will not exceed five feet in height. Since the applicant's trucks are a minimum of 12-foot in height, the applicant is requesting a modification of the city's fencing requirement to the existing fence height of six feet. The property is located within a special flood hazard area known as the 100-year flood plain, and the applicant does not propose any new development within or for the use of this property. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council on your June 3 meeting. And here is a photo of the existing property. Any questions for staff?
Any questions for you? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Just swear your name. This is a public hearing requesting conditional use permit in conjunction with the site plan approval to allow the operation of a truck rental, leasing, and sales center with outside storage. Would anybody like to speak? Would anybody like to speak? CNN will close this public hearing and move to the next.
Item C is CU 719 Whoopax LLC. The subject property is located on the north side of East Ash Street between Durant Street and Ridgewood Drive. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an indoor hatchet-throwing facility with ABC for brown bagging. The applicant's requesting an amendment to a previously approved conditional use permit. City Council, at your meeting held April 1 of 2019, approved a conditional use permit for a place of entertainment without ABC for a hatchet-throwing facility within the Ash Street Shopping Center. The applicant is now requesting the facility operate as a place of entertainment with ABC to allow customers to brown bag at the facility. The property is owned shopping center, and places of entertainment with ABC are permitted use only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by City Council. The applicant requests to operate the indoor competitive ax and hatchet-throwing facility within the existing strip center to allow customers the option of brown bagging at this facility. Brown bagging would be limited to a six-pack of beer or one bottle of wine per customer. The submitted site plan indicates six hatchet-throwing lanes, a lounge seating area, office space, a storage area, and restrooms, including one handicap-accessible bathroom. Hours of operation are Thursdays, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Fridays, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. There's one to two employees at this site. No such establishment shall be located within 200 feet of any residentially-zoned or developed property, church, or school. The subject property is directly adjacent to an existing church within the shopping center, residentially-zoned property to the north, and residentially-developed property to the northeast. Sufficient parking exists to serve customers of the shopping center. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on June 3. And here is a photo of the subject property.
Any questions? All right. This is the conditional use permit to allow the operation of an indoor hatchet-throwing facility with ABC for brown bagging. Would anybody like to speak? You need to come up, and the clerk's going to have to swear your name, okay? Give her your name, and she'll swear you in, because this is a conditional use, okay?
If you will raise your not standing to front on the aisle, please swear or comment to your adult or children.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, guys. Good evening.
My name is Mike Garrett. I'm the co-owner of Whoopax. We've been open for six weeks now, and this is a very growing trend. There's 30 of them in the state of North Carolina now, and we're the only one that doesn't have BYOB or sells alcohol. We don't really care to get into the sale of alcohol, but we do a lot of private parties, a lot of celebrations, a lot of anniversaries, and group outings. We hosted insurance companies before. We've had the Seagulls fencing come out, and we just celebrate either birthdays. We do some team-building activities, stuff like that. And we've got a pension in favor of a BYOB, and the permit is for Whoopax. Have the address, and I actually have the pastor of the Family Worship Center that's come and participated in throwing ashes. They've signed off on being in favor of allowing us to BYOB, and the large reason is our hours were only open Thursday till 9:00 p.m. Friday, Saturday, we close at 10:00. We're not open on Sunday. We don't interfere or intervene of anything they're doing on Wednesdays or on Sundays. And I can pass this around.
Just give that to the clerk. That'd be good.
And then the other letter I brought with me today is a recommendation from Ben Seagull's, VP of Seagull's fencing. They've come and participated several times. Biggest kicker here is they live on 230 Ridgewood Drive, which is on the same street that this facility is, just off to the right of that photo. Ridgewood goes down the side of that. He lives in that neighborhood, and he's got us a letter of recommendation, you know, I'm writing to support the permitting of Whoopax, allowing persons 21 or older to bring up to a six-pack of beer or a bottle of wine. And I can pass this letter around as well. And a big thing that we do, most of the time, it's only 60 minutes. That's our number-one seller right now. We do packets of 30 minutes, 60 minutes, or 90 minutes. So with that a lot of time, you're not going to be able to drink more than six beers, a bottle of wine. Most of the time, people go across the street for brewmasters for dinner and a drink and come over and try to bring one with them. Obviously, we've been denying them of that, but it's just like bowling, right? So everyone wants to do indoor recreation, grab a slice of pizza, have a beer, have a soda pop, and do some bowling. Axes, the very same thing. Our facility is extremely safe. We've got fences, targets lined off. There's safety rules, safety briefing, soon as everyone walks into the facility, they sign a waiver, then we give them a 10, 15-minute brief on safety things to do and not do, and we have a little lounge area for people to be able to hang out in. And I'd love to hand this over, so you guys can take a look at this as well.
All right. Thank you, sir. Are you done?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Good.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Would anybody else like to speak? CNN, we're going to close this public hearing and move to item D.
Item D is Z1019 Chandu Patel. The subject property is located on the west side of Way Memorial Drive between New Hope Road and Windsor Creek Parkway. The applicant's requesting a zoning change of two lots from residential 16, which we refer to as R16, to general business. Both lots are zoned residential and are owned by the applicant. Each lot, or one today, remains with a single-family dwelling, and the other lot, the dwelling has been removed. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have residential 16; to the south and west, office and institutional in R16; and to the east, R16 and shopping center. The city's land use plan recommends mixed use too for the two properties, which would allow for a mixture of uses associated with residential, office, institutional, and shopping center zoning districts. The properties are not located within a special flood hazard area, and city water and sewer services are available. The applicant has not indicated any future development for the subject properties. He believes that the highest and best use is for commercial development, since they are located in close proximity to the new commercial development and to the future Interstate I-42. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on June 3.
Any questions?
This is a picture of the lot that has recently been cleared, and then this is the lot of the house right next door to it. Any questions for staff?
Thank you, Chair. This is a public hearing requesting a zoning change for two lots from residential R16 to general business. Would anybody like to speak? Would anybody like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Hi. How are you doing? Hi, everybody. My name is He-Man Patel, and I'm in favor of the commercial, you know, zoning. I believe it would be a good benefit for the area and the trend, you know, going towards out that way, and I think it would be a positive win-win for everybody. More tax dollars, you know, and everything's growing out there. You have the ABC stores, you got the Walmart, you got the Bojangles, you know, so I think it'd be a good thing.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to speak too, sir?
Yes, Don Taylor. I'm here for the Patels, and what they're wanting to do is to build a small strip mall to have that, to be rezoned, so they can have access to build that, and that's in the plans if we can get this rezoned. So we're all in favor for it to be rezoned should it help the city.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? CNN, we'll close this public hearing. We will excuse our hard-working Planning Commission, and thank y'all for coming tonight, and y'all are welcome to stay as always. Next, we have public comment period. This is the time in our meeting where anybody from the audience can speak for up to three minutes on anything that has to do with Goldsboro. Yes, ma'am. I see you. Ma'am.
I'm coming.
Okay. You take your time. Don't run over nobody. Good evening.
Good evening. Y'all need to do something about the skateboarders down on Center Street. They're posing a hazard to traffic and to people walking around down there.
All right.
And I've told them time and time again to get out of the street. They won't do it. One of them even told me that the chief of police was a personal friend of theirs and told him they could do it. But something needs to be done, because somebody's going to get hurt. And you, sir, I'm going to tell you this, the next time you call me a bitch, you better put Ms. Queen in front of it.
I will do better next time. I'll pause.
You better.
All right. We'll check on your skateboarders, okay? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
At the City Council meeting on March 18, I made public comments about the importance of citizen participation in local government, that most of the ridership on the Gateway System are residents of the city of Goldsboro, that there is an absence of any city of Goldsboro private citizen on the Transportation Advisory Board, that the Transportation Advisory Board bylaws has a requirement that there be private citizens on the Transportation Advisory Board, and I requested that City Council make demands on the Gateway Board of Directors to appoint two city Goldsboro private citizens to the Transportation Board of Directors, oh, correction, to the Transportation Advisory Board. I also requested that the Board of Directors for Gateway be notified by the city that the Transportation Advisory Board attendance bylaws are not being followed. I was then advised by City Council that they would review the packet of information on the Board of Directors and the Transportation Advisory Board that would distribute it and give consideration to the request I made. I did not receive a response from City Council to my request, so on April 24, I sent an email to Councilman Stevens, who is the city of Goldsboro's representative on the Gateway Transportation Board, for a status on my public comments that were made to City Council on March 18. I did not receive a response from Councilman Stevens, so prior to the start of the May 6 City Council meeting, I asked Councilman Stevens if he had received the email I sent him. He confirmed that he received my email, and there was nothing he could do to help because the Board of Directors and the Transportation Advisory Board are two separate organizations, and the Board of Directors has no control over the activities of the Transportation Advisory Board. I tried to explain that under the Transportation Advisory Board bylaws, the Board of Directors is the only entity that has the authority to appoint members to the Transportation Advisory Board. I also advised him that I would provide him with a copy of the Transportation Advisory Board bylaws, which clearly indicates that only the Board of Directors can appoint Transportation Advisory Boards. In the packet of information I've given you, and also Councilman Steve Stevens, there's a copy of the comments I made on that meeting on March 18, and a copy of the Transportation bylaws with the sections underlined regarding the Transportation Advisory Board membership requirements, and how Transportation Advisory Board members can only be appointed by the Board of Directors for the Gateway.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Pierce, Britt Pierce. I basically am here for one reason, but now I have two after sitting through the 5:00 meeting. My initial thing was to come and mention to all of you what an elected official is, and that's an individual that has been elected based on an election, meaning other people voted for you all to sit in these seats. But from my research and understanding, the current members of Goldsboro City Council have not been elected as judges. I come this evening to state how disappointed and disturbed I am at the way our city officials have handled the matter between elected Councilman Williams and a city employee, Ms. Cole. Based on my understanding of the situation and what the news anchors have shared, Ms. Cole filed a complaint and was denied by a judge. Mr. Williams is a peer to all of you that sit before me, with the exception of these three, and the current personnel issue is with the individual that you hired, that the city hired, and not even you all, the city hired. So you have no judicial rights to censor an elected official because you don't favor that individual. And what was more disturbing is that you all sat in a meeting a few minutes ago and decided that you were unanimously going to, not unanimously, but you were going to vote out the right that he should not have counsel, nor that he would have a hearing, but then when we, and I was at that meeting, but this same young man that just sat down asked that you, Mayor Allen, be investigated, and per the lawyer, you have broken code of ethic, but you and your good old boys decided you should not be investigated. So now, as another citizen, once again, my name is Alicia Britt Pierce, if it needs to go on record, I'm asking my councilman to bring it up again that I think that they should have an investigation and a full hearing against the mayor. Because if you can have one against Councilman Williams, you can have one against the mayor. And if you continue to make us feel like, as citizens, we don't have a right to call you out and call you to the carpet, this way you guys are trying to call this person, the individual that you all shared in the paper that you're trying to protect is a hired employee. If she is that fearful, she can quit. She is not the only woman that has ever felt like something was uncomfortable. But for you all to sit up here and choose that he can't be investigated, but other people can, is not correct. And if what I'm saying disturbs you, you can excuse yourself, because you always seem to excuse yourself when it is against other people. But I really, I'm telling you, I'm very upset. I think it is unfair, and as I said, I've asked my councilman, Councilman Foster, my name is Alicia Britt Pierce, I want you to reopen and share that again, and if they continue to, what you need to remember is that we're voters.
That's right. That's right.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deontay Buckner. To begin, Mayor Allen, I want to thank you. A member from your department came out to my grand opening this evening of the Hare Fair right downtown, and basically, she pretty much said everything I wanted to say. I said it in my office, and I was looking at a live recording, and I was just couldn't help it but to think, like, Lord, I got to get down there. I got to at least say something. I know my voice might not matter much to y'all, but I felt as if I needed, it was urgent that I get down here and say something. I feel as if it is completely unfair, the treatment that he's receiving.
That's right. That's right.
And also, I'm going to go as far as to say, the next election is going to be very interesting, and I think the way he's been handled is so wrong. That's all I got to say about it. It's just wrong with our eyes, and it's wrong with a lot of our eyes, and we voted. We actually voted. I don't know if anybody else had did, but I actually came out and I voted, and I think I speak for a lot of people, and I say, it's wrong.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. The Goldsboro Wayne Branch, NAACP, launches a full investigation of the Goldsboro City Council's attempt to censor and oust Councilman Antonio Williams. The Goldsboro Wayne Branch of the NAACP are the largest civil rights organization in our nation, stands with the citizens of District 1 in support of their duly-elected Councilman Antonio Williams as their representative on the City Council of Goldsboro. We object to the multiple attempts to remove Councilman Williams from this seat as the District 1 representative. This latest and many attempts by this council to censor him and ask for a recall of the 2015 election would render his voice and the voices of the citizens in his district as null and void. It is an attack on his rights and the rights of the citizens that elected him as their representation. Antonio Williams as their representative on the city council of Goldsboro. We object to the multiple attempts to remove Councilman Williams from this seat as the District One representative. This latest and many attempts by this council to censor him and ask for a recall of the 2015 election would render his voice and the voices of the citizens in his district as null and void. It is an attack on his rights and the rights of the citizens that elected him as their representation. As with the other attempts by this council, this attempt is in violation of your own ordinance 31.15 through 31.21. We have received a complaint. We believe the complaint has validity. The Goldsboro Wayne Branch of the NAACP has been called upon to monitor your actions and take appropriate legal actions to ensure that race is not an issue, that the civil rights of Councilman Antonio Williams and his constituents are not violated, and that justice is achieved. The Goldsboro Wayne Branch and the ACP will fight the censor of Councilman Williams and his constituents. We will not stand by while you attempt to silence the voices of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go over together.
Not one step back.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Brandy Matthews, and I first would like to apologize to my city for not using the power in my voice to speak out sooner against what I feel is wrong. Council, I sit quietly in your work sessions and even in your council meetings almost every meeting time, but because of the recent spectacle you made, I can no longer sit quietly. I will, however, commend you for making a long decision of finally adding some new bus shelters as of today. However, you guys still eat every other Monday. Yet, we cannot give our teachers any incentive pay because some taxpayers are complaining, yet we continue to keep up the upkeep of a golf course that does not serve all the people and those taxpayers do not complain. Millions of dollars designed for a new Herman Park Center and a host of other bad investments by the city. I have seen the mayor overtalk, interrupt, and disrespect other members of the council and even members of this community when they stood right where I'm standing to make a public comment.
That's right.
His behavior went without public correction from the same council members who will so publicly, quickly, and boldly correct Councilman Williams and even Councilman Foster for their behavior. Even more recently, I watched David Hamm act in a way that was very inappropriate and seemed to me almost scolding Councilman Williams and even calling him a disgrace. Hamm went on to make a motion that would censor Councilman Williams, which seemed very malicious, and it also seemed out of pure retaliation after a brief word exchange. Here is a fun fact for you, David Hamm, and anybody else with the same belief. Every time a black man uses his voice to defend himself, that does not make him disrespectful, it does not make him threatening, it does not make him a bully, and it definitely does not make him a disgrace. How ridiculous. To be clear, I in no way support negative behavior from any either of you. However, each of you should be held to the same standard and dealt with fairly. If you cannot be fair amongst yourselves, how can I believe that you will be fair amongst your districts and our communities?
That's right.
Enough is enough. I have watched this council vote against almost every idea and suggestion by Councilman Foster and Williams, no matter how progressive, even recently voting to expand a business that they both said would be a continuous hazard to the people in this community. Broadway, Stevens, Hamm, and Akka all voted for the expansion, leaving me to believe that your loyalty is more true to Mayor Allen and his interest in that company. How do I believe that you are for our people? I will make an assumption that each of you accepted these positions to make change. I love the coined phrase by Goldsboro High School principal, "Change the narrative." Change the narrative of those people who are, that you think are oblivious to know what's really going on. Change the narrative that says some of you only see the colors white and green. Change the narrative of you against us. Ask yourself, what have I done when my time served? Who have I helped? What have I fought for and what have I fought against? We, as the people, have so much power because you, as elected officials, whose interest is over self, we get a chance to vote you out. I will no longer sit quietly and allow you to try to silence our voices and remove us from the table.
Anybody else like to speak?
How you doing?
How are you, sir?
All right. I'm Keith Peaton, a former employee of the city of Goldsboro.
Good job, ladies.
Tonight, I was invited to the meeting. I was challenged. I spoke on Facebook, so I was challenged by somebody to come. See, you're speaking on Facebook about the issues of come to a meeting. I've never been, but I'm so proud of the citizens of Wayne County tonight. And I have never been as proud. I also think, if you can, I think it's biased and I think it's hypocrisy to, whatever he did, I don't know. I wasn't here. I wasn't in the meeting. But tonight, in this meeting, this lady said, "Don't ever call her that again if you do." And you admitted to it, Mayor Allen, Mayor Chuck Allen. That right there says you need to be systemed to talk to a woman in that light.
That's right.
You don't know the backstory, sir.
I don't know the backstory, but if your peers can let you say that, and I'm hearing other people say you, and I know you. If I hear them saying it tonight, well, I want everybody to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Would anybody else like to speak? All right, if not, we're gonna close the public hearing and we'll move to consent agenda. And we are removing item H on the consent agenda, correct?
Yes, sir. So mayor and city council, consent agenda items E through K, with the exception of H, are presented for your consideration.
Move to adopt consent agenda items E through K, with the exception of H.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Roll call.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Schrattan Broadway?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Foster?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Hamm?
Yes.
Councilmember Akka?
Yes. All right, the consent agenda is moved. Next, we got two items requiring individual action. The first one is item L.
Mayor Council, tonight, what we're asking you for is authorization to sale of substandard lots to adjacent property owners under session law 2004-94. Staff has received offers to purchase on several city-county-owned properties that have been deemed to be substandard lots. The board must either accept or reject the offer, and if accepted, authorize staff to execute the instruments necessary to transfer the ownership. The first is a lot on Swan Street. The offeror is Mr. Core offering $1 for 50% of the property and Ms. Teresa Woods offering $1 for 50% of the property, which is as per session law 2004-94. Is that the slide that I sent you? Okay, I'm sorry. You have a slide in your packet that identifies Ms. Woods' property. She has three adjacent properties and Mr. Core has one. So what we have said is the Swan Street lot, she would be eligible to have, and that is the lot, it's the one right beside it, that would be eligible to be split 50-50. And the tax value on that, because it is an empty lot, is $600. The next lot is 917 North John Street, which is actually just south of that. It's the long skinny lot. That, Mr. Core has offered $1 for 50%, and as the same, Ms. Woods has offered $1 for 50%. And in your packet, it showed the proposed split. The parcel value on that is $1,500. And then the last lot is 114 Swan Street, which is actually the one that is highlighted in blue. We have contacted the owner of the other adjacent property. They showed no interest, and as per that session law, we are authorized to offer it to the one property owner, which Mr. Core has offered for $1, and the proposed, or the tax value, I'm sorry, is $7,830. So what we're asking you tonight is to either accept or reject the three offers, and I've presented you three resolutions. This would be, on the first one, Swan Street, is 50% of the property to Mr. Core and 50% to Ms. Woods. And if accepted, then we would, you would authorize staff to execute the instruments necessary to transfer ownership, once we have concurrence from the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Part of the terms of the resolution is that they must recombine as a condition of sale. So the two lots, the Swan Street lot and the 917 North John Street, they must recombine it with a portion of their lot. It can't be left separate. Now, the offer for 114 Swan Street with 100% of that property must be recombined with Mr. Core's lot. So just to FYI on that, they are responsible for paying all closing costs. We are required to have concurrence with Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Then we shall execute the deeds.
Any questions? If not, you have a recommendation?
We would recommend you accept.
No, I know you, I was just telling the council.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
You said, second by Councilman Broadway. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Close light ones. Motion carried.
Okay.
You got item M?
Yes, sir. So we have three items here. As you're aware, that the city is allowed to dispose of real property only in certain manners, and this is under General Statute 168-266. The property that we're presenting you tonight has been approved and it's been through upset bid with the Wayne County Commissioners. And what they are asking the board to do tonight is to either approve or reject the offers. So they have been through the proper procedure of GS 168-269. So the first one is 912 North John Street with a tax value of $1,620. The adjoining owner, which is St. Matthew's AME Zion Church, has offered to purchase this property, and I believe their offer is $4,300. Tax value is $1,620. And so what we're asking you is to either accept or reject this under 168-269, which is upset bid procedure. And once you've authorized that, then Wayne County will be empowered to execute the deeds to sale. The next two lots, 707 North Georgia Avenue and 709 North Georgia Avenue, those, we have received a request from Habitat for Humanity, which is a nonprofit. The tax value for the first parcel is $3,210. The second is $3,180. Now, they have requested that these parcels be donated to their group for purposes of carrying out its mission to provide housing for those in need. They are a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit with the Internal Revenue Service, which I have checked and verified, and they are current with their 990 filings. They are also active and registered with the North Carolina Secretary of State as a nonprofit corporation, and they are current and active. We do have a city, we have a W-9 on file for them. The Board of Commissioners at Wayne County has approved the donation to transfer the parcels as requested. The county is now requesting that city council either approve or reject, and this will be conducted under General Statute 168-279, which is sale of property to entities carrying out a public purpose.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Close light ones. Motion carried. All right. Thank you, Captain. Next, we got the city manager's report.
I have the additional reports, sir.
All right. Mayor and councilor reports. Councilman Williams?
First off, I want to thank everyone that came out in support of me. I really, really appreciate that. I've tried to always be, to have integrity when it comes to serving as District One councilperson. It has not been easy. A lot of things that I was gonna say was actually said. You know, if you have eyes, if you have ears, kind of know what's going on. No one's voice should be censored simply because they speak against wrongdoing. A resolution of censoring a member is the main action of a board and can take only when it concludes that one is, one is member has violated its code. I've not violated any code. Such a resolution has no legal effect. However, a council member yelled "fire" to our community when he stated he wanted me, wanted my access to City Hall restricted and wanted me removed from council seat. He along with other council members have caused serious implications for our community and has damaged my reputation stating I am violent, and that is so far from the truth. Our city attorney should have advised my fellow council members that the actions requested were not only unethical, but also illegal. Proper procedures have not been followed since this ordeal began. According to Fleming Bell, who drafted the Model Code of Ethics, the board doesn't have legal authority to enforce code of ethics for one of its members. The board has no legal authority to impose other sanctions. I am fighting for my community's voice to remain at the table. Due process is something we are all entitled to, and we can not only pick and choose what procedures that this council addresses. We deserve for our local government to work better than that. It's important to my community and myself that the truth comes out so confidence can be restored. I'm demanding a hearing so we can finally get to the truth and correct anything that's needed corrected, correcting. We need to look at this as a learning experience and find ways to move forward, which shouldn't mean giving up our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stevens?
No comment.
No, I've been saying no comment. I was just waiting for them to finish clapping.
Councilman Foster?
Yes. First off, I'd like to thank the community for coming out. I think it's important that everybody showed up tonight, but what's more important is that you continue to show up. We have a lot of issues on the table every other week, and a lot of times, these issues go, they're not looked at from the community. And as councilmen, me and Councilman Williams, we need your support. We've been outvoted 5-2 on, all the time, on a lot of issues.
No matter what it is.
And we, and we need the community's voice. This is an election year, so remember, so remember when it comes time to vote, who voted for you and who didn't.
That's right.
You know, earlier, I made a motion to have the mayor investigated for breaking the ordinance, and the board voted no. Councilman Williams, as of, that I know of, and our attorney couldn't tell us, hasn't broken any rules, hasn't broken any laws, but he's being investigated. So there are a lot of unanswered questions, you know, and like I said again, just remember, you know, don't fall for the old trick, smile on your face, show up at your churches, all of that stuff this year. You know, it's serious. Our city depends on it for the next four years, that we come with some different leadership.
That's right.
You know, so I thank y'all for coming out and continuing.
Councilman Akka? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.